I'd like to call to order the Board of Commissioners meeting for May 11th, 2023, for the Town of Mint Hill, North Carolina. We do have a quorum present to conduct business. At this time, I'd like to ask Commissioner Long if you'd lead us in the invocation, please.
Let us pray. Dear Lord, thank you for your beautiful day you've given us. Thank you for this opportunity to come together, to make decisions, and deliberate on the future of our town, and help us that we serve our citizens in the proper way each day. Please be with those that protect us, our fire police and others in our community, to watch over them. We ask this in your name. Amen.
Amen. Please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. You may be seated. Item number three is additions, deletions, or arrangement of agenda items. Do we have any? Hearing none. Item number four, approve the minutes of the April 13th, 2023 regular meeting.
Submove.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Do I have any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes unanimously. Item number five is our consent agenda. A, approve easement request by Charlotte Water for sewer service to serve property on Lebanon Road. B, adopt resolution to donate the 2013 Dodge Charger to Stanley Community College. C, accept the April tax collector's report. D, adopt reimbursement resolution. E, accept March and April treasurer's report and financial statements. F, adopt personnel policy revisions and addition of police department incentive. And G, adopt revisions of two fire department job descriptions, along with the addition of battalion chief.
Motion to approve.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Do I have any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes unanimously. Item number six is the public hearing on the Town of Mint Hill budget for fiscal year ending June 30th, 2024. Town Manager Welch, you have the floor, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Commissioners, for your consideration and hopeful adoption at the June meeting. I present a budget in the general fund in the amount of $22,213,881. The Powell Bill Fund, $774,000. The Stormwater Fund, $1,153,344. Police forfeiture Fund, $50. ARPA Fund, $4,460,000. Capital Projects Fund, $18,550,000. Infrastructure Fund, $50. Tourism Fund, $360,150, at a proposed tax rate of 22.5 cent per $100 valuation, and no change in the $10 vehicle fee. Happy to answer any questions.
First of all, do we have anybody here that wants to speak to the public hearing on the town budget? Any questions from the Commissioners?
No, sir.
No questions.
Thank you, Town Manager Welch. Item number seven, I'll now open the public hearing on ZC 23-5 filed by Griffin Land Holding LLC for tax parcel number 139-092-17 located at 13315 Joe Mack Drive to request site plan approval. Is the applicant present?
Mayor, the applicant has asked to defer this to next month's meeting.
Anybody having trouble with that deferment?
You can ask our attorney a question. Advertising, we just open it, leave it open. How do you want to handle a public hearing?
Yeah, I would continue the public hearing until next time.
We are now in recess and going to continue the public hearing on ZC 23-5 filed by Griffin Land Holding LLC. Item number eight is public hearing on ZC 23-6 filed by Griffin Go Forth Properties LLC for tax parcel number 139-092-22 located at 11134 Business Lane to allow a storage yard. Is the applicant present?
Yes.
If you'd come to the podium, sir, you have the podium for your presentation. And if you would give us your name and your address, please, so that we have it on the record.
I'm David Griffin. I'm one of the owners of this property. Address, I guess, business address is 11128 Business Lane, Mint Hill, North Carolina, 28227.
Very good. You have the floor.
Okay. Well, we just want to get the piece of property zoned to where we can have outside storage, to rent spaces to people with RVs, boats, trailers, whatever they want to park back there, just to have some revenue coming in. It's a piece of property we've owned for probably 10, 12 years. I don't remember exactly now, but we're just trying to get a little bit of revenue coming in for it to help pay the taxes and hopefully make a little bit of money off of it. There's a big need for the storage in that type in this area.
Just for clarification, is this the lot behind the existing building?
It's behind the Griffin Tyler Marble Building, directly behind it, yes, sir. It's almost totally surrounded by trees and...
Questions or comments, Commissioner Long?
No, sir.
Commissioner Holton?
I think it's been a while since I was out there. I think when we had talked before, when you were kind of looking at this project. Did you have to do anything as far as like grading or anything like that since then? What, two years ago?
We have not done any grading or anything since then. We did some grading prior to when we met with you. I don't remember exactly when it was either, but the grading has happened over about a 10 or 12-year period. You know, we cleared out some for our business use, and then we cleared out a little bit more so we could have access to it. And then we cleared out a little bit more and spread some gravel on it.
And I know, thinking back, I remember the concern about security with that. What are the plans as far as securing this facility?
Securing it? Well, we were going to put a gate, you know, like you see the gates that roll open and shut, where people can go in and out of them. We just haven't done anything. We kind of put the project on hold till we got all the approvals needed.
I got you. And that's in security, like cameras?
We haven't planned any of that. It might be necessary. I don't know at this point.
I think in today's climate, it probably would be. I know if I was, if I had a boat and I was storing it there, I'd want to be, make sure it's safe and secure there, but that's, that's all I had. I was just more concerned with the security of it.
Mayor Pro Tim Dalton?
You're looking at storing like boats, campers, pickups? That's what we're looking at storing there, correct?
Yeah. What do you call them? Mobile homes that people have? You know, most people can't park that at their home. And we were just kind of, like I say, offer the, it's almost a two-acre tract that we could use and store some stuff like that on. We may use it for some of our personal business stuff, too.
That's all I've got. Mr. Henderson?
No questions.
I, too, looked at that lot a few years back, and I think that was, that time's when we figured out we had to have some approval from some of the county people and some of the other people. But you have taken care of the stormwater, you know what you've got to do with all that and everything else? All those permissions are in place, correct?
Well, we've, we're working on that. It doesn't move real fast, but yes, sir, we are working on all that. You can see the, the plan that's been, our engineers have drawn and everything. We have not started the actual, what do you call it?
Right.
Water runoff basin, but it is, it's in the works.
Good. We don't have any further questions. Anybody here to speak to this public hearing this evening? Thank you very much. Hearing, hearing nothing else, I will close the public hearing on ZC 23-6 for parcel number 139-092-22. Item number nine is public comments. Did we have anybody sign up? Nothing on the list. Did anybody send in any emails or anything else that need to be read into the record? Item number 10, discussion and decision on ZC 23-3 filed by Gray Family Real Estate for tax parcel number 137-153-11 located at 11207 Blair Road to amend the zoning plan for superior storage to increase the total storage square footage for Phase Two. Mr. Hord?
Thanks, sir. Planning Board met April 17th and offered a favorable recommendation, and they provided the following recommended consistency statement. ZC 23-3 was found to be consistent with the land use plan. Land use plan indicated industrial light. Light industrial areas were intended to support a mix of innovative businesses that could benefit from the colocation-related complementary industries. The mix of uses ranged from light industrial operations and makerspace to supporting office, retail, and service uses. Therefore, ZC 23-3 was found to be reasonable and in the public interest based on the information presented and reviewed with this petition.
Any questions for Mr. Hord? Mr. Henderson?
How many buildings are we talking about?
I can't remember off the top of my head.
Yeah, please. Please. Name an address, please, for the record. That's...
Yes, sir. I'm...
Housekeeping.
Bill Gray. Address is 11131 Blair Road, Mint Hill, North Carolina, 28227. Ma'am, you were asking about how many buildings for the new phase?
Yes.
We're going to have five total.
Five total?
Yes.
Okay. And will they still have the same brick veneer?
Yes. They will, in essence, be identical to what is existing with the first phase.
And just, are those buildings going to be occupied, or are you looking for people to rent them, or what?
Those are going to, there'll be several individual units within each building. So we'll have like 10 by 10 units, 10 by 15 units, 10 by 20 units. There'll be an assortment of different sizes that people can rent to store their things.
Okay. No, nothing else?
Mayor Pro Tim Dalton?
You said five buildings. The plans we got show building number six.
One, two.
Which is the whole back link?
You are correct. There are going to be six buildings. On the front row, I was thinking the first one was one big long, but there's actually a break in that first building.
Okay. I have no issues with the, that. I'm still concerned with the house you got and what your future plans are with it. The house that's on the property in front of the buildings.
Yes. Well, interesting, you should inquire about that, because Mayor Simmons had inquired two months ago if I had any thoughts about what to do with that land. And Marvel's been rolling around a little bit since then. And I'm going to have an architect put together some drawings to present to you all on the planning committee about possibly putting some retail on the front side of that property.
Okay. That's all for now.
Mr. Holton?
No, no. I think everything was answered there as far as all the U-Haul trucks will be parked out of sight and out of mine.
Correct.
Yep.
Commissioner Long?
Yes, sir.
All right. Hearing no more questions, do I have a motion to accept or modify the consistency statement as presented by the Mint Hill Planning Board?
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion to accept the consistency statement as presented by the Mint Hill Planning Board.
One second. I have a motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And B, motion and decision on ZC 23-3.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion for a favorable decision on ZC 23-3.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor of ZC 20, favorable motion on ZC 23-3, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes unanimously, unanimously. Thank you very much.
Thank you, ladies and gentlemen.
Look forward to seeing you later.
Thanks.
Item number 11, discussion and decision on ZC 23-4 filed by Ed Bowers for tax parcel number 135-301-04 located at 4500 Morris Park Drive to request a conditional zoning to construct a new building on part of the site. Mr. Hord?
The Planning Board met April 17th and offers a favorable recommendation and recommended consistency statement. ZC 23-4 was found to be consistent with the land use plan. The land use plan indicated industrial light. Light industrial areas were intended to support a mix of innovative businesses that could benefit from the colocation-related complementary industries. Therefore, ZC 23-4 was found to be reasonable and in the public interest based on the information presented and reviewed with this petition.
With the brick rear. With the brick rear. That was the Planning Board's recommendation, right?
Oh, yes, yes. And the applicant has agreed to that.
Has agreed to the conditional of the brick rear?
Yes.
Good. I don't have to ask that question again. I hear that question, too. Commissioner Long, any questions? Mr. Holton? Or Pro Tim Dalton?
Nope. The only question I have is about the brick.
Commissioner Anderson?
Are there any other buildings near the proposed site? Are there any other buildings near the proposed site?
Well, they're actually building right next to the building that's been there since, gosh, probably the 80s, 80s or 90s. So they're building right next to that. There was, there's a little pad for them to build on.
Okay, okay. Nothing else?
Hearing no more questions, I will accept a motion to accept or modify the consistency statement as presented by the Mint Hill Planning Board on ZC 23-4.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion to accept the consistency statement as presented by the Mint Hill Planning Board.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor of accepting the consistency statement as presented by the Mint Hill Planning Board in reference to ZC 23-4, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? I'll now accept a motion and decision on ZC 23-4.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion. We give an approval on ZC 23-4.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any further questions? Hearing none. All in favor of, favorable motion and decision on ZC 23-4, say aye. Any opposed? That passes unanimously as well. Item number 12, update on park and facility online reservation system, updated park uses policies, adoption of revised park and facility fee schedule, and action deemed appropriate. Mr. Bailey, go ahead.
All right. All of this information you have in your agenda package and what I'll present tonight is a follow-up from what we previewed at your retreat. So you had some information at your retreat about this project we were doing with online reservations to make it easier for folks to reserve and pay for different facilities. So tonight, this is kind of a two-part thing. We have some information coming to you next month as well. So tonight, we're going to introduce RecDesk, the online reservation system, ask you to adopt the revised assembly room and flex room reservation policy, and adopt the park and rec facility fee waiver policy, which is in your agenda package, and the revised fee schedule. And next month, we'll bring definitely some revisions to Chapter 18 and most likely some revisions to Chapter 16, which would be the parades, processions, and demonstrations. We're trying to create just one process for special events. So most of you are familiar with major minor events at the parks, and then other town events that the police department, the fire department review fall under Chapter 16. We're trying to just make a more streamlined process that's easier to explain and just call it special events. And just a little more customer-friendly that way. So one big thing, before I get into this reservation system and fees and that kind of thing, there's absolutely no change to our walk-up play and use policy. So paid reservations are not required at the parks. So if anyone wants to go to the park and enjoy the park, they can do so just as they always have. So any playground, field, court, shelter, any park facility can be used by individuals, families, groups on a walk-up basis. And what a walk-up means is simply it's access without fees on a first-come, first-served basis. So you can go out there, kick a ball on the soccer field, play tennis, sit in a shelter, eat lunch, whatever you'd like to do. If, and this is in our current ordinance, if others are waiting to use park facilities, so if someone's waiting to use tennis courts, waiting to use soccer, there is a time limit, anywhere from 60 to 90 minutes, depending on the facility. So someone can't just take it and use it all day if someone is waiting. And certain shelters, tennis, and pickleball courts are always designated as walk-up. They can't be reserved. So we always have at least one shelter, two tennis courts, and one pickleball court always available just for walk-up play. So that's one way we try to keep that open as well. So reservations are optional. If a group wants to guarantee a time or a date, if they're flexible, they can just go to the park, just like they always do. All right. This is the look and feel for RecDesk, and this is the online reservation portal now. Just simply put, it was a little cumbersome for people to go online, either do a paper form for a shelter or an online form, and still have to come physically to town hall to pay or run a credit card at town hall. This takes that away. They can do it online, simpler, easier, and they can just print a piece of paper and go to the park, or have it on their phone as a proof of purchase and proof of that reservation. So you notice there, you've got facilities and calendar. All this is public. So if you, if you click on one of those facilities, let's just say the shelter number one, you can look at the details, you can reserve it. I'll just kind of walk you through some screenshots here. If you click on that, it's got the information, it's got the location, it's got the refund policies, rules, picture of what it is, and a map. So real easy for somebody who's not familiar with the parks to figure out what we offer. The hours, and then calendar. So you can actually look at the calendar for all parks or just one park, and you can also filter that down if you're just looking at shelters or just looking at tennis courts. You can look and see dates that are available. And if you see this green reserve on the calendar, you can reserve it. So you just click on that, pick a timeframe, and go from there. I'm not going to walk you through all that. The calendar is also publicly available. Whether you have a login or not, you can look at this calendar and see what facilities are booked. And this is also, one, one piece of this project that we need to implement is at both parks, we're going to have some monitors at the concession stand, and at Willgrove, we need to figure out exactly where, but it's just digital signage. So that day or that week, all of the reservations are just going to be scrolling through, and park security can see who's got reservations, the general public can see. And if there's even a discrepancy about somebody's reservation, they forgot their piece of paper, or they don't have it on their phone, just walk up to that monitor, that digital signage, and it's got your name and your time and everything right there. There's your proof. So that'll be something that's coming pretty soon, too. So the fee schedule is in your packet. I've had just some offline conversations with most of you about the fee schedule. We've had fees in some form or fashion since 1984 with booking town hall rooms and different things. There was a pretty major update in 2002 and 2005 with the Park and Rec Committee going through fee schedules. We really haven't had any major updates on fee schedules really since about 2014, to my knowledge. So this would apply to Veterans Memorial Park, Park on Willgrove, town hall facilities, and special events and fees. So be happy to answer any questions. You've got all these documents in there, in your packet, and it was available online, too. But tonight, the actions requested would be to adopt the fee schedule and adopt that assembly room and flex room reservation policy, and adopt this fee waiver policy. Be happy to answer any questions.
Commissioner Anderson will start down at your end. Questions for Mr. Bailey?
How do our fees compare with other county parks' fees?
I'd say we're probably in the median. We looked at the Sportsplex in Matthews, given the fact that we have new turf fields, and we looked at some other towns. Obviously, some of the usual suspects around here would be Town of Matthews, Indian Trail, Stallings, a few other places. We looked at Mecklenburg County's fee schedule. So we're, we're right in the ballpark with all of them.
Nothing else?
No questions.
Mr. Holton?
No, I think it's great.
Mr. Long?
Lee, just for a historical perspective, when might we have started a fee schedule for the use of, say, the park facilities?
I did a quick glance back, and 2002 was the most obvious one. There may have been just some fees adopted here and there. I didn't take a very deep dive into the minutes, but 2002 was what I saw as a formal park fee schedule coming on the radar, and that was the Park and Rec Committee of the town recommending that to the Board of Commissioners.
It'd be fair to say for more than 20 years, we've had a fee schedule in place?
Sure, sure. So nothing, nothing new, and every town that has parks, they have a fee schedule, and it's not that using it, again, the walk-up is available, no fees, no transactions. If it's vacant and nobody's using it, have fun. But if you wanted to, you, a group or an organization, if you wanted to have it on a specific day at a specific time, then reservation is required.
Thank you, sir. Thank you.
And I will confirm that with his brief checkup. I was on the Park and Rec Board at that time.
Okay.
I was a really young man at the time. I see who's laughing out there. But I remember discussing that, and that timeframe is about right, because I spent my many years on the Park and Rec Board, and then went to the Planning Board, and then to this chair. So, and I was a young man.
You were, yeah.
Yeah.
I was, too, then, but...
Yeah. A lot of us, a lot of us in this room were all of you out there laughing, by the way.
To that point, too, Commissioner Long, we actually, at both parks, we have some facilities that we will not let you reserve. So we lock those up for walk-up play no matter what. I mean, if, now, if we get an extraordinary event, you know, and somebody basically is renting the whole park for some huge tournament, we might would consider that. But if you come to rent, let's say, the tennis courts, right, and there, and there's five of them, there's, there's two that you can't rent. So if the other three are rented, sorry.
Yeah. And we made that clear on the fee schedule, too. So the ones that are walk-up play only on the fee schedule, they're noted. So it's, that's an information, in addition to being a fee schedule, that's an information sheet, too. These are the ones you can just walk up and play.
Thank you.
Question. The ones that can walk up, I know this, but I want to put it out there. They are limited on how much they can play if somebody's waiting to play. Is that correct?
60 to 90 minutes.
Okay.
Any further questions?
I guess just for clarification, if one of these reserved units is not reserved for the whole day, that in turn is now a walk-up?
Exactly.
Okay.
Any further questions? Hearing none. On your, on your screen, you have actions, items requested this evening. I'll do them one at a time. So item number one, adopt revised park and facility fee schedule. Do I hear a motion?
Submove.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion on the revised park and facility fee schedule? Hearing none. All in favor of adopting that, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Item number one passes unanimously. Item number two, adopt revised assembly room and flex room reservation policy.
Motion to approve.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Do I have any further conversation or questions? Hearing none. All in favor of adopting the revised assembly room and flex room reservation policy, say aye.
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 Any opposed? That passes unanimously. Action item number three is adopt the park and facility fee waiver policy.
Submove.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor of adopting the park and facility fee waiver policy, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes unanimously. Lee, thank you for all your work on this. You're not done. We'll see you next month, right?
Very good.
Item number 13, other business and council matters. Commissioner Long?
Yes, sir. I attended the Central Lina Regional Council meeting last night in Charlotte. Just two or three takeaways. We discussed trends for this community... Just the two or three takeaways, we discussed trends for this community. Our population is growing quite a lot, and it's interesting that it's an aging population that's moving here, so that's gonna put a strain on some of our support items, and I guess as many of 55 and older communities we've approved, it's, it's being reflected in the people that are coming here. But the highest needs that we talked about with, there's nine counties that are a member of this organization, I represent Min Hill, the highest need is transportation improvements. The most discussed was affordable housing, but I think it is and will continue to be a challenge just because of the cost of real estate in the Charlotte Mecklenburg region for us, anyway. Thank you, sir.
Mr. Holton?
I got nothing.
Mayor Pro Tim Dalton?
Yes, I'll start with the Min Hill Chamber of Commerce. Attended their spring tea at Artland Baptist Church on the 29th, it was a huge success. They were, a lot of ladies there having a good time, they had a lot of items they auctioned off or you would sign up and bid on. And then after that, we had the Tina Ross afternoon in the park, which was good. Tuesday, this past Tuesday, they had their meeting at the, the board meeting, and they had a speaker from Farm Bureau, and she made some very interesting facts that she brought out, and Tony kind of alluded to them, but concerning part was the farms that are within this area, how many farms are being sold, that the families are selling out, taking the cash, they'll make more, selling their farms than they would ever be able to make by farming them. And the average farmer now age is 55 to 60, so that's a, that's a dying field. I found that very interesting. And then I'll report on Carpo, they didn't have a meeting last month, so I have nothing to report on that.
Commissioner Anderson?
Just one thing, the Min Hill Historical Society held their fifth annual rodeo, April 21st and 22nd, and it was a huge success. The rodeo is an event that's made possible annually by several Min Hill businesses, and the proceeds for the rodeo are a large part of use for the Carl McEwen Historic Village and some of the other events that they hold for the Historical Society.
Just a couple things, some of you have seen some things in the news recently. One of the meetings that I attend monthly with Town Manager Welch, most of the time unless it's his wife's birthday, which it was last month, is the MTC meeting where we're dealing with the Katz Group. So you saw recently on the news where one of the TV stations at least is spilling this big thing about Katz had another derailment Wednesday and this and that and the other. So I want to make it clear that the Katz is moving in the right direction right now, we do have some buses that come and go from Min Hill. The derailment that happened, no matter what you heard, happened on their yard, on a truck that wasn't in, being used at the time, that there weren't any people on or anything else. So sometimes the news crews get a little bit of something to run with, and they run with something, they try to make something out of nothing, that, I will tell you right now, the current derailment, in my opinion, is making something out of nothing. So we've got a gentleman that's in charge of Katz right now, and they're headed in the right direction, I have all the confidence in the world, they'll take care of that. And that goes back to what Commissioner Long said about transportation, because I think that we're gonna have to count on those trains and buses and all that kind of thing in the future more and more and more, as our roads get too crowded for us to drive on. Second of all, I want to commend, to commend Town Manager Welch, this board, and the staff here in Min Hill, for the work that they've done on this budget this year. Mostly, the staff understands that they had to put up with Brian for the last 60 days. He goes into this mode during budget, which we'll, we'll come up together one of these days, staff, we'll all go to lunch and come up with a word for it. But I was receiving texts most of the last two months, well after my bedtime, on stuff that was going on, and I see some of the department heads raising their hands out there at the same time. But sure to be commended, this budget's getting bigger and bigger every year, and tougher and tougher every year to make it work, and we thank you for all the work that you've done on it. I also want to thank everybody that's out here this evening, I appreciate seeing new faces and more faces in the crowd every month. I like to see the young faces out here in the crowd, they're gonna ask all the way home what was going on, and they're not gonna figure it out anymore than some of our citizens do sometime, but we're glad to see you guys here this evening, and I've got a town pin for you, for your lapel, if you'd come up here after the meeting, guys, and we'll make sure that you get that. But I want to thank the town people for coming out. The best way to get involved in the town, to understand what's going on in the town, is absolutely not social media, it's absolutely to get with staff here in this building and ask the right person, the right question about what you're trying to find out, and I promise you, they know the answers. So the next time you see something on social media, don't go to the next page and see what's going on, call our planning department, call our town manager, call our town engineer, and, and get the true answer of what's going on here in town. With that being said, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned, thank you very much.